So we can call the meeting to order, I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. So, good evening and welcome. It's December 21st. Joint Concord Carlisle and Concord School Committee Meeting. I'd like to call the Concord Carlisle meeting to order and note that this meeting is being recorded and fully on Zoom.
And I'll call the Congress School Committee meeting to order and we will do a roll call.
Booth present.
Anderson present.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right, Court, I like you.
Morano present.
Mostapi present.
Rainey present.
And Wilson present.
All right.
Okay. Great. So, Harry, hi, welcome.
Hello. Sorry for being a couple of minutes late. We had a little bit of a miscommunication with which one of us was coming to this meeting.
Totally, or even early.
Yeah. Well, I don't have too much to talk about this week. I think in general, everyone's just a little bit anxious to get out for break. One of the things, I think there's a lot of stress right now because teachers are really trying to cram in a ton of material right before the break, which is obviously something that's like pretty normal. Obviously, as a sophomore, it's not something I've experienced before. But in general, I think you just have been pretty accommodating and good about making sure that, oh, sorry, that everybody feels like accommodated and stuff like that. The other thing I'd say, there's obviously a little bit of tension around Omicron, especially with like masking and stuff. Teachers are obviously being a little bit strict. And I think obviously this is a much bigger conversation, but I've heard people wonder if like virtual school is ever something that we're going to go back to. And the other thing that I've heard a lot about.
I hope not, Harry. That's not on my plan.
I hope not, too.
Hoping, hoping.
Yeah. And the final thing I just wanted to mention, I've heard a lot recently about teachers and just in general about like the attendance policy at the high school and how they're sort of having a conversation about it right now. And I know that's something that we've been talking about as like Senate as a whole to sort of think about like getting student input for that. And that's something I thought I'd mention quickly. So, yeah.
Do you want to tell them a little more, Harry? I don't know if they're aware of the attendance discussion that's going on.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, you probably know a little bit more about the specifics than I do, but I think that the attendance policies became very relaxed last year because of Zoom and obviously being accommodating to things like that. And I think this year, there's just a little bit of a challenge trying to reinstate an attendance policy. And I think it's a little bit more complicated than just going back to exactly what we had before. And especially, I think something that people have had a little bit of an issue with is like tardies and also people saying that the passing period, which is currently, I believe, four minutes is a little bit too short.
Yeah, the main, and that's a COVID outcome because we got, that was what it was before and now we're just trying to adjust back to normal. The attendance discussion the staff's having under the leadership team, which includes the administrators, but also all the department chairs, is really taking attendance at the period level. So that every period, we're reporting attendance and just making sure kids get to class, that they get there on time, that they get there and they stay. So there's a discussion going on and a lot of feedback coming in from teachers and Harry, you're smart to have us think of getting some student feedback, too. Nothing, nothing's happening overnight or in any knee jerk reaction, just trying to tighten things back up again for, for everybody's sake. So. Thanks for mentioning it, Harry.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, Harry.
Have a good holiday.
Break. Yep.
Thank you so much.
See you in the new year.
Have a good break.
Okay, so we have, we also, a public comment. So we have, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function in the participants tab or in reactions and let yourself be known or turn on your camera. I do not see any members of the public wanting to make a comment. Okay. So then we'll move to recognitions.
Great. So I'll ask Mr. Cameron, I think, to come on camera or there he is. And I know Tyler's here, but I'm going to turn it over to you for a more thorough introduction.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. So it's my honor to introduce to the entire school committee and to our superintendent of schools, the Project 351 nomination. That nomination came from our teachers and was served to me and I had an opportunity to connect with the organization of Project 351. So a little backstory before I actually share that introduction. So Project 351 is a nonprofit organization in Massachusetts, started under Governor Baker, or excuse me, Governor Patrick, around 2010, 2011. And it's an organization with a lofty goal and that goal is to really capture the important age of middle school students and know how essential it is to inspire leadership. And what Project 351 asks and asks and the charges ambitious as you can think of is the 351 in Project 351 is actually a wonderful trivia answer to the question, how many towns and communities are in the state or Commonwealth of Massachusetts? And that answer is 351. So what Project 351 looks to do every single year is to organize one eighth grader from every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And since 2011, they have brought one eighth grader from every community to the State House. It was interrupted last year, connecting with Tyler. It sounds like it's going to be interrupted again this year. And every year, each middle school is asked to either select a representative of the school that will either represent the school or represent the town. In my five years in the middle school, we've had Boston students, including last year, we had a Boston student representing Concord Middle School. We're back to a Concord resident and Tyler Shepherd, who is representing not only Concord Middle School, but the town of Concord. It's the first year in four years, we've had a boy. And as the first year in two years, we've had a Concord resident. So it's my honor and pleasure to introduce to you Tyler Shepherd, a trusted Tyler S. in my life, a second Tyler S. I've never said this to Tyler and I'm going to say it in front of the school committee. There are many times I'm drafting a very critical, important email to my assistant principal and right before I hit send, I look at the two and it says Tyler Shepherd. And I actually, I'm going to start with a question. Tyler, have you ever received an email? Has that happened?
Yes, once before.
We will not ask you to divulge that information or who that person was. Would you mind sharing a little with the school committee, your roles and responsibility as the Project 351 nomination?
Of course. So thanks for the introduction, Mr. Cameron, and thanks for having me on the Zoom meeting. So over the past month, I have been attending multiple Zooms in, as I learn more about Project 351 and what to expect throughout the year. So first, in January 14th is the Service Hero Match Day. This is when we will learn about our service hero for the year, who is a former ambassador and is now part of the alumni program. Then, starting in January and continuing through February is the Service Leadership Academy that meets every Monday at six. And this academy includes inspirational weekly guests and social media challenges. In Week One, we will learn about Project 351's values, culture and community building. And then Week Two, they will give us a preview of the Spring Service, which I'll mention later. Then in Week Three is the Playbook Initiative in partnership with the Boston Celtics. And Mr. Cameron will go into more detail about this later. And then Week Four is the second part of that playbook initiative. And then unfortunately, due to the continued impact of Delta and the new spread of Omicron, they moved the initial in-person launch day, which is going to be at the State House, to a virtual event on February 11th. And then February 28th, the Spring Service Training begins. It's in support of Cradles to Cramps. And then in May, there's a Hope and Gratitude Walk where you can walk, run or bike 3.51 miles in your community. And the money that is raised will support nonprofits selected by the ambassador and their fellow classmates. And then in June, there's a leadership reunion with current and former ambassadors. They will unite for leadership development, service impact and team building with special guests. And on September 11th, there's a 9/11 tribute service to honor and remember in support of the families of fallen military and critical communities in need. And in October, there's another Service Leadership Academy with more of the things that were mentioned earlier. And then in December, there's the Fall Service, which is a campaign to end hunger. And the ambassadors will mobilize schools and communities in their hometowns, help food pantries and the families they support. And at the end of the, at the end of the year, ambassadors have the option to join the alumni organization to serve and lead through high school. And that's pretty much the year in, with this program.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
I wonder if I might ask a question, Tyler.
Of course, yeah.
You know, you and I might define leadership in different ways, but we could probably both agree it always requires relationships. And you probably have fellow students and some of your teachers who are going to be very, very interested in what you're doing.
Yes.
Can you, is it too early to envision how you're going to try to get some messages back to CMS?
Yeah, I think so. I'm, so I've only attended two Zoom meetings with this, so I'm not fully certain of how the year is going to work out, but I, I think they send you back to your school with resources and you can facilitate various programs in your school. But as an overall Project 351 organization with that.
So I'm not a chairperson of the committee, so I'm not authorized to say this, but just as one member, I'll offer that I'm confident this committee would love to help you in the small way that we can if later on in the year, there are messages you want to have amplified to the larger community. We might help you be part of that effort.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. So do you have, do you have any family listening in on this meeting tonight?
No, I don't think so. I was talking to my mom beforehand, but I don't know if she logged on to this meeting.
And Mr. Cameron didn't say how much trust he has in you, but he clearly he does if he sends you emails.
Tyler, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Are you really a 17-year-old masking, masquerading as an eighth grader? You are so poised and impressive. I'm having a very hard time believing you're actually in middle school.
I am, but.
I'm not sure. I gotta see you with my own eyes. I don't believe it yet.
I do have an eighth grader, so I can attest to it. It's an eighth grader. Congratulations. You were clearly selected by your teachers for the leadership skills that you have within CMS, so we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I'll just add, the Superintendent's Association has a very close relationship with Project 351. So all throughout the year, at different events and activities or correspondence, we'll, we will hear updates or see kids at, at events and really stay close to what they're doing. It's a really impressive organization and I'm always having to remind myself, they reinvent themselves every year with a different group of kids and continue the work they started the year before. And you can see it's students like Tyler that make that happen. So.
Working in another public school and I could say they're winning the bulletin board posting. Because I see Project 351 everywhere in my school, so it's clearly been embraced by many, many schools. And I think you're going to have a wonderful opportunity interacting with these other ambassadors. So, thank you. We would like to hear back, probably in the spring, maybe, an update.
Definitely.
How this is going, because I think it's really a good way to, external outreach and internal outreach. So.
Yeah, I would add in closing, too. Tyler and I would really love to come back to really explain the work that we're doing with the Playbook Initiative with the middle school. In years past, and you right, remember, you might remember in those committee members who have been part of the school committee for the last few years, it was a Project 351 alumni that Andrew and I were working with to bring the Playbook Initiative to the middle school. Now, and Tyler said it a few minutes ago, now Project 351 and the Boston Celtics are inspiring the eighth grade nomination to work closely with whoever the point person or people are. We have a very ambitious plan through the playbook this year. We're essentially running it through our advisory program. And instead of training a third of our students, we are looking to make sure that all of our students receive the anti-discrimination bias prevention training by March, every single student at Concord Middle School. We're excited about that.
Good luck.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Yeah.
Tyler is going to get to town basketball. I don't have quite the same plans for my evening. But we thank you for allowing us to come and share a little bit of the partnership that we have with Project 351.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Holiday.
Great. So onto the reading of the minutes from executive session of November 9th, 2021. Their motion to approve the minutes.
Can you refresh my memory? I did read them, but I don't recall. Was this region or joint? Do we remember?
This was a joint.
It was a joint, okay.
Edco.
Thank you. Be happy to move that we.
It was quick. That's why.
Happy to move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee and the Congress School Committee accept the minutes as written for the executive session of November 9th, 2021.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Ruth, I.
Morano, I.
Mostapi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I. Regent. Okay, correspondence. We had some correspondence about about charging stations and we had correspondence about some COVID protocols, especially about testing.
And the Concord Public Schools had a couple of emails regarding literacy curriculum.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Chairs and liaisons reports. I think.
Tracy. Yep, I can start. So in terms of DEI, we, our next meeting is going to be January 5th. And so Andrew and I started today to work on the agenda for that. And we will be doing the survey as a school committee. I think that some of you might have started it. We're going to discuss it at our January 5th meeting. So don't feel as though you have to do the survey right now. You can wait until January 5th. Attend that if you like. And then our focus group is going to be on Thursday, January 6th. So we need to figure out who's going from 5:00 to 6:15. It'll be the first session. And the second session is 6:30 to 7:45. So if you have a preference for one of them, just let me know. And otherwise, I'll just split us up. Eva and Sarah, I'll split you two up. And then I'll just plug the rest of us in, if that's okay. And if you can't make that session, just switch for somebody else. I'll try and make it easy.
It's in person or Zoom?
It is going to be on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you. So Eva, you and I will talk about our schedules and what makes sense. Yep.
Yes. So just send me an email with your preference and let me know.
Great.
Okay.
Oh, sure. I could, go ahead, Alexa.
No, you go next.
Quickly on policy. Jared Stanton and his office have been working with the Policy Subcommittee on the Facility Provisions for Community Use. And I can say with some confidence that we should be finishing up at the Subcommittee level on January 6th. That's our next meeting so that we can bring facility fees and some other ones that required little work to the committees on January 11. And then Policy Subcommittee meets again on the 13th to plow into new material. So we're making reasonable progress, I think.
And Sarah, I also should have mentioned that Court and I both did attend the DEI Town Commission meeting. And so maybe going forward, if we can just maybe have an observer go from school committee.
Yeah, rotating would be very nice to keep us all informed and keep that, that link effective.
To.
And it's really going to be a two-way link, I think, but their purposes and ours overlap, but they're certainly not the same. So we need to stay, stay working in tandem to some degree.
Do they have an anticipated schedule, like a frequency or?
I'm thinking it's monthly. Am I right, Tracy?
I think it's monthly, but they're really just getting up and running.
Their next meeting is Wednesday, January 12, 7:00 PM, if I'm correct.
I believe that's it.
Okay. Are there any other? No.
I can.
Yeah. Oh, Alexa, yeah.
Okay. I assume, do we, are we going to do our CMS building update in our other part of our meeting? I'll just, I'll give a quick update. The CPAC Board had their meeting on Monday, the 13th, which was last week. What was nice about it in my mind was that even though I think Deb Dixon was scheduled for maybe a 15-minute update, there was probably like an hour's worth of engagement, like a lot of Q and A and back and forth between just members on the board asking various questions about everything from literacy to summer school. So I really do think that having Deb at those meetings on a consistent basis has been a nice improvement because there has been, I think, some productive back and forth between parents and the administration. We also, they also talked about, oh, the big other news there was these guys did amend their bylaws. I know there was some back and forth in the fall between, I think it was like the state reaffirming that CPACs do not need to be subject to open meeting law. So, and you know, and all the constraints they're in. So their bylaws, they did vote to amend their bylaws. And I think, you know, of course, I understand that we all have our own frustrations about sometimes the constraints of open meeting law. The only thing that I think will be different for our board here at school committee is you are now going to be a little bit more reliant on Eva and I for robust updates because their meetings will no longer be recorded. So if, if that's of a concern to any of you guys who might have watched the meetings, just, I think that was, you know, part of, one of the bigger things that came out of that meeting. Trying to think what else. Eva, what do you think? They still do have open, they do have a couple, I think, two maybe open board seats. One might be in like publicity and one, I think, is the secretary. So in any event, those were kind of the big, the big takeaways from that meeting. And Eva, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I definitely want to add the fact that having Debbie at that meeting, again, it was it moved the communication levels forward so much with families. The amount of information, the richness of information about the programs that she was able to provide in detail to the families, to us, to, it gives an educate, an opportunity for education about all the, all the great things that are happening in the, in a school. There were a couple, there were, you know, there were questions, how do we bring our kids back to the district? Which I thought was, oh my gosh, this is, this is wonderful, you know? We want to hear that families are feeling like there are programs that truly support our students. So definitely commend Debbie for coming out and spending a good hour with us patiently answering questions. And then, yeah, the, the board is changing, is reshaping how they're going to be communicating. However, they will be still providing us their, they will still be providing us their dates, right? There will be something.
Oh, yes. Okay, that is, that's really good to note, Eva. So in the, in the absence of being subject to open meeting law, they're going to develop what they sort of called best practices to ensure that their agendas are posted still to the town website and they will absolutely do their, you know, very best to continue with that 48-hour window in advance. So, you know, so that was actually, you're right, that was like a big part of the debate, like, oh my gosh, can we still use the town website? The answer is, in fact, yes. I believe I texted Cynthia during that meeting to get that confirmation. So I appreciated that. So in any event, so I think that is all very positive and they were committed to best practices so that everyone in our community can still be involved in their work.
And it was great really to hear that families do use that automatic signup for the newsletters where they're able to receive. So they are receiving our meetings. They are receiving CPAC meetings from the town. So that's a good feedback to bring back to the town. That it's very helpful to the families. And I think that's it, that, that was most of it. Debbie described some of the programs and how we are beefing them up and all the programming that, all the teacher education that is going on and all the plans. So I think parents can reach out to the CPAC as well for that.
Eva and Alexa?
Yeah.
Good question, just so I understand it better. I honestly thought CPAC was an advisory committee of the school committee and thereby would fall subject to open meeting law. But now it's referenced as a board that creates its own bylaws. So what then is the relationship with A, the school committee and B, the school district? Are they completely independent? I'm, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
Structure now.
Sure. I, that's a great question, Court. I can, you know, there were, we, they, they endeavored to address this two meetings ago. And at that meeting, there were several attachments to the agenda that referenced. And I don't even know, Court, truthfully, if they were changes. I think that there was potentially misinterpretation of whether CPACs were ever subject to open meeting law. So I believe that the statements made by the state this fall that were actually clarifying documents, not documents that changed anything. If I'm correct, and I think I am.
So this is Destiny Guidance that.
Oh, yeah. So my, my understanding, Court, would be that nothing is different. Only that there was clarification that, and again, you know, there was a lot of talk in that meeting about how so much of what you could call like the business of the PAC, right, could be done a lot easier, for example, you know, on email or, you know, whatever. So it would be outside what we all know is traditional open meeting law practice. So I think, I think that their amendment to those bylaws was to help them facilitate like the ease of doing like what I call like the boring perfunctory work of business, right? And so, so I think it's all, so I think, I think it's all great. And I did. And so, yeah, so that it was, it was a clarification document. The Attorney General's Office clarified through guidance. So, yeah.
And I think you said something important earlier on, which is it's now more contingent on you and Eva than before to keep, keep us in that loop.
Right. And again, I think what I was pleased by was their very open commitment to develop in the absence of being subject to open meeting laws. I don't remember precisely if they were going to form a Subcommittee or if it was just going to be more casual. I don't remember precisely if they were going to form a subcommittee or if it was just going to be more casual among the board leadership, but they are going to develop you know, some codified best practices to ensure that their communication, both internally and externally, you know, are, continue to be out there. And of course, you know, their meetings are open to the public, so like our meetings.
Yeah, and, and to the same effect, so that their advisory role has not changed. They, they have, they still, as a board, come, they, they get together and they draft their goals that they drop those goals together that and the needs of wide variety of students and families. So nothing really, nothing other than their own internal communication, the way I understood. Nothing other than that has changed.
Forgive me for taking too much time. One more question. Do the bylaws suggest that their advisory role is more directed at school committee? Or more directed at building-based leadership? Or is there any direction implied or expressed in these bylaws?
No, again, as a subcommittee of our committee, the, well, you know, the, the advisory statute does talk about, you know, their participation with, yeah, I guess, the school committee on, you know, on, on different special education programs. And I think, you know, they're in this unique position where their communication sort of is, it's imperative that their communication goes two ways, right? They need to be communicating with us, obviously. And then I think, you know, a big part of the role too is then communicating back to parents in that community to ensure those parents are abreast of what's going on. And also, I think it's imperative for them to kind of, through their coffees and, and, and other events to, to sort of collect and aggregate feedback. So then that communication can come to us. So so they sort of sit at the center of it in my mind, where they have to push information out both ways and collect information out both ways, if that makes sense.
Good, thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you.
So maybe I'll just give, if you don't mind, a quick update on Concord, Calhoun Adult and Community Education that met December tenth. Just letting you know that the they, they are discussing a very interesting program, the future program would be about is about meet the town offices. And soon the new town manager, which was interesting, it gives opportunity to people that live in town or work in commit committees to better understand the roles of different parts of our government in Concord. The winter book, book with offerings is already out in mail and everyone wants mail back, so please sign up. There is a lot of great offerings. The winter drivers at educa- drivers at education is has strong participation and it's going through the holiday break for our students. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, let's see, Dr. Hunter.
Great, thank you. I'm not gonna share my report. You have it attached to your agenda. And a lot of what is here is going to be referenced at an upcoming agenda item, so I'm just going to pick a couple of highlights. I think I'll start with mental health. Just to say, we're seeing more kids in crisis, especially the last few weeks. I think the middle of the year has always brought an increase in, in mental health needs. And I think we were saying post-pandemic, which is now the wrong term, but the impact of the pandemic on top of some of the previous patterns we'd seen is really putting us at a pretty, a pretty interesting point this week, and we're just trying to support families and individual students. So that said, some of the other work going around, around that, and Kristin can chime in at any point. She's working with the mental health team on expanding our options through a subscription that would include opportunities to connect with telehealth. This would all be privately connected. The families through their insurances would connect with the providers. We just become a, an opportunity to the gateway to get there. And as you probably know, the system is over, overwhelmed and struggling quite often. So anything we can do to facilitate support to kids, we're interested in trying to do. So she's looking at that with the mental health team, which is all our counselors across the schools. And I think I'll leave it at that in terms of mental health. The other piece I was going to highlight was equity and D E I work. Andrew's closing out the equity survey shortly, so the staff was the last leg of that. So they've, they've been participating through the written survey and are in focus groups, as have others been the last few weeks. And then twenty twenty-two will bring the consultants and the, the aggregating work to aggregate the results and start to summarize the data and bring it to us in a way that then can be shared and reviewed and analyzed. Worth noting, certainly, because this has been a goal for a while. Again, Kristin and Andrew leading this work with the department chairs, first at the high school and then at the middle school to develop a protocol for how we're going to handle racist language in English and social studies. This has been a desire of the staff, the kids of all of us for a while now. So that we've got a planned approach to, to how we're going to handle such sensitive language, knowing that it exists. Both in some of the classical literature, as well as the primary sources in social studies. But we're also seeing, you know, bringing in more culturally diverse texts may bring more of that. So we're trying to build a structure that helps teachers feel comfortable with an approach to it, that helps students also become aware of the process and approach, a big part of that being a pre-teaching component. Where, where kids aren't just surprised by the language, they know it's coming and there's been some dialogue around it. So we're excited that that's coming to form. The middle school's going to follow suit. And we're just glad to see that that, that has moved forward as much as it has in the last few weeks. So I think I'll leave it at that. There's a great deal more to talk about as we get to the other agenda items and upcoming meetings. And turn it back to you unless you have questions.
No, so we'll turn it back to you for COVID updates.
Oh, but here we, yeah, that's, I didn't do the COVID parts because I knew it was coming. So I had to update this right before I got on because that's how COVID is working. This last week to two weeks. Let me share my screen for this. So this won't surprise you. I don't think that we are becoming more in the thick of it with COVID. I will say that the numbers I'm going to share don't seem as large as what I'm hearing from other districts. So we still seem to be in a manageable process here with case counts. I know other communities are seeing faster spikes, so we'll see how that goes forward. In terms of this week alone, we are at eleven cases. You can see here. That is, you can see it's been steadily ticking up. To be at eleven on Tuesday is a definite change in pattern. Overall, we had that one blip with Thoreau back a month ago. But we haven't seen eleven in a few days, really, at all this year. So it is, it is coming our way for sure. You can see it's pretty spread. Thoreau thankfully has been spared so far because they had their turn, but it's fairly spread among the other schools. What we aren't seeing this week is, you know, relationships between the cases. They are coming to us from outside exposures so far. So that's, that's good news. And our total case count so far this year is at ninety-three. Vaccination rates, we are collecting vaccination information from the kindergarten through sixth graders. So we'll have those updated numbers for you in January. Testing participation has remained very steady, so these numbers look very, very close week to week. And then test and stay is dependent on vaccinations because we don't test and stay the vaccinated kids. So it depends where the cases land. This will change as we get into January and the younger kids are fully vaccinated. I did bring you this number last time we met, symptomatic tests, just so we remind ourselves. These are outside PCR tests that are done when students are symptomatic. A hundred and five of those across the schools. Things are evolving quickly. We met with the commissioner last week. He stressed mask mandates will be reviewed in January. They're not going to even, well, at least last week, he said they weren't going to even look at it until we get back in the new year. Since then, he's called another meeting tomorrow. So I'm, I can't predict where that one's going. I'm sure it's related to Omicron and all the changes with the vi- with the variant. He stressed again that snow days are traditional unless we hit an extreme winter, in which case, if a lot of the districts are getting to five days, they might then start to look at remote as an option to prevent the summer from eroding away. And then finally, and I can add a date to this, we've been talking with D P H and a vendor to work on a clinic. It would be boosters, but it would also be any of the pediatric needs for a second shot or any needs at all. Wide open to the community at large, not just the school community. And we have a tentative date of January sixth to offer more vaccines at the high school. So we're excited to be able to keep participating in the outreach to, to vaccinate the community. So that's where we are. It feels a little moment by moment. And I'm getting texts from the high school as they're contact tracing even right now as we speak. So it's feeling busier. And, you know, we're hoping the break is a positive and not a source of added surge. And we're ready for whatever January is going to bring, which clearly seems it's going to be a busy COVID, COVID month ahead.
Question, Lori? Oh, sorry, Sarah. Are, is there any chatter that the turnaround on the pool testing, like, you know, because I know the PCR, we send it out, it's not in-house like the antigen. Do we anticipate the turnaround time, which is relatively quick, to be maintained throughout this surge? Are they bracing for that? Or is there any?
Yeah, we've seen a little slower turnaround even the last few weeks. Maybe all the pools don't come back together, but they stagger over a few hour period. Overall, though, I, I do think we're sticking to what we're used to, which is twenty-four to thirty-six hours. So that's good news. You're right. Some of the other delays are real, for sure. The access to testing is real. You know, we're feeling very fortunate. The state has provided us so many options, which I don't know, maybe we were taking that for granted a little bit before, but now that we're back in that hard-to-find mode of access, we're really grateful that, you know, Massachusetts has taken on all the testing. So we have, we have options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there are adequate supplies. It's not that, it's not that the state is.
So far, yeah, so far. So we're expecting more binax antigens right when we get back in January. And we're getting through this week without a problem. So hopefully that stays the case.
And then we haven't checked in about winter sports, which are now up and running, will be running over the break. And, and while we're not having any kind of mandates about anything, it's probably worth just reiterating that, that we, you know, we, we have all of these wonderful testing options. We have the, the facilities up and running and, and highly encourage, I think, athletes or anybody really participating on in, inside extracurricular activities that, that might be more virus-friendly to, to, to participate in, in the pool testing. Is there messaging around that going out to students?
There can be for sure. We haven't messaged it so far, but we certainly can do that as this week moves forward and we get into the break and the winter really revs up here. So we certainly can, no, no question. I heard a story from another district that they had one positive case on a hockey team. And when they tested the rest, this is, this is Omicron, half of them were positive. So half the team. So it, it's real. It may be very different. You're seeing in the professional field already, I think. And the NHL, et cetera. I do think any, any extra opportunity to test kids would be very valuable, for sure.
And Lori, do you think that MIA will adjust any of their guidance? Has Erin heard anything about that in terms of, you know, I'm thinking indoor track with spectators because now Northeastern is not allowing spectators.
Right.
And Reggie Lewis, like, I mean, they're going to Reggie on Thursday. So I'm assuming that, you know, that's changing. But has he heard of anything like that?
No, and I'm, I get all the MIA updates. We got one today really reinforcing mask wearing and, you know, having coaches be really, you know, on top of that. We haven't heard anything about spectators. We do have local discretion on, you know, some of those spectator pieces. I, I don't know that they're going to put anything broad in place. I haven't heard, heard that so far.
Okay.
Are, are we hosting any big events between now?
I don't think we have any big events. We have the typical. We have regular basketball games, et cetera, for sure.
Those are hundreds of students.
It can be.
Smooshed together. What would be the protocol if it was a positive case? Either with the team or a spectator over the break?
The contact tracing process would certainly be in, in effect. We have options. As you know, last year we aired on the side of caution and broaden that out and ask the whole team to participate in whatever we were doing. Unfortunately, at the time it was quarantine. If they're vaccinated, that wouldn't be the case, but we could certainly ask them all to be tested. So we could err on the side of, of caution there. You know, our spectator size is still limited. We're you know, the basketball games, we haven't counted and asked for RSVPs ahead of time. It's probably the one spot that we haven't really controlled it that way. We certainly can keep an eye on that. In terms of spectators, if kids, if someone was positive in the audience, they'd have to name to us who was within that, you know, range of close contact definition, so that we could be sure they were contacted as well.
Dr. Hunter, are we looking at doing pool testing? Beginning of the, would it be the same schedule when the students return to the high school? And what day would that be?
So it depends on which school. Each school has slight variations to the testing days that they use. I think the high school's on Tuesdays right now. So we tend to have to stick to that because to some extent, it's just, you know, how much the nurses can manage at once and we spread around. We get help from C I C for different things, so we move those nurses around. Those support people around depending on the schedules. So I think we'll be back to a normal schedule. We did alter it this week a bit so we could get everybody in on Monday and Tuesday and get results back before the vacation started.
And I just wanted to add that the lab will be closed. So tomorrow, if anyone or anyone's child missed the pool testing, tomorrow is the last day to get yourself tested. The labs are closed for holidays, December twenty-third through January first. So stay safe.
Lori, can you tell us, are we participating with the full complement of D C L schools or are we still at a reduced number?
No, it's a normal, normal schedule, full, full D C L, yep.
So I, I trust that our athletic director knows that our protocols aren't changing, but in the last two weeks, a lot of other things have changed vis a vis this disease vector. So I, I would hope he's very sensitive to it.
Yes, I'm quite sure and probably why he's going to be at the basketball game and not on your meeting later tonight. I, we've seen a few districts around the state shut down sports if they think they've got spread. I know Springfield's done that already. I think it'll be that sort of monitoring that we do. If we, we see something starting to, to ramp up, we're gonna need to, to slow it down and, you know, make sure we contain it. So that's the mode we're in now. I say all this with the big, you know, asterix that's been in place all through COVID of something might change tomorrow. M I A might change things tomorrow. I don't know what the commissioner is going to say to us at Desi tomorrow. While we try to balance, you know, what we know kids need for wellness, you know, emotional wellness and physical wellness, we're back to this discussion again.
Can I ask a quick question that might not be the right time for this question, but I know Susan Rask is retiring next week.
Think even last week, maybe.
Oh, okay, okay. Is there, have they made any progress on a replacement? I only ask because I know that your relationship has been collaborative and helpful. So I didn't know if you felt that her absence was going to be this void.
What I've seen in the short term, I know there's an Void. What I've seen in the short term, I know there's an assistant directors technically stepping up. What I'm seeing in the short term, we've heard a lot more from. We, we always hear a lot from Tricia McGeehan, but this week we're hearing. A different level of planning and things that Susan, you can tell she's trying, she's working to spell some of that. So. That's been great. I also am attending a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the. Town department leaders called by the fire chief about COVID in Concord. So I think there's different people picking up. Pieces of the leadership as well, especially those who have been deeply involved in COVID for almost the two years now. So.
Good. So Lori, I'm. I've been listening to the experts. I'm sure as many of our committee members constantly do. And they're very clear about one of the big pillars in our fight against COVID is ventilation. And as we are indoors now, so much more. I'm wondering, obviously not tonight, and I don't think for the next meeting, but. Can we have a sort of deeper dive revisit of? Our current status on ventilation in all of our schools? Many school committees and districts are really zeroing in on this and. You know, really being sure that we've done everything we could possibly do to improve the ventilation in all of our schools. Even our old schools as much as we can without, you know, spending an exorbitant amount of money, obviously.
So we can bring. Yeah, we can bring back what we've been, been looking at. If some of it was just reviewed because of the middle school project or because of the mods at the row. So I don't think it ever went off the radar completely, nor should it. But Jared can bring those numbers back and we can talk through where we are.
And the experts are saying that schools should be more aggressive than, than some of these standards that are not really up to, up to snuff. You know, they're saying go way beyond the baseline, the standards. I could send you a couple of articles.
Yeah, I think. We'd want to see, you'll remember our consultant from early in the pandemic. I feel like we were never taking the easiest, smallest route. So. I am sure we can revisit that, but I think we're in good shape. So we'll be sure of that. Jared can get out and may have some people. Updates the CO2 readings, especially now with the heat on and full winter mode starting up. So we can update those numbers for you for sure.
Okay. Yeah. I guess Cynthia or more importantly, Lori and Jared, are, are the monitoring devices actually functioning in, in all the buildings right now?
Are you talking about those couple ones at the high school that needed repair?
Or any, are they, are we?
So we have, we have a range of monitoring devices, depending which school we're talking about. Willard and the high school are new enough to have infrastructure that monitors it. The other schools, we have to go out and hand monitor it. So everything is functioning from the humans to the.
We've got fixed hardware in two. Okay.
Yeah.
And then Cynthia, just to follow up on, on your request. I'm not really equipped to interpret a big data dump. So I would hope rather than voluminous tables of, of hourly readings. We get also some interpretation of, of the data.
Yeah, I think we can, we can work on that. So we give you our conclusion of how the data. With the story of the data.
Right. And what would we have to invest to, to have a better collection system in our schools? I mean, is it, I don't, I have no idea.
So Russ and Jared are, Russ is on for one of the later items. So he's hearing all this and. We'll, we'll talk more on where we're at and what the other options might be.
All right. Thank you very much.
And can I just ask about the, the vaccine clinic? What time is that going to be at? And when will parents get notified of that? Because I know that, you know, the 16 and ups. Are desperately looking for. Right now. And even, you know, maybe if it were at three o'clock versus five o'clock, maybe some of the athletes or kids could stay after school. Just to really.
We're scheduling for four o'clock, Tracy, because we need time to. Set up after, you know, that little gap between school getting out and letting the community in to just be sure it's set up the way they need it. I'm waiting on the link, which hopefully is going to be any minute now that they get that to me to push out to everyone. Because I know there is a definite need out there. So hopefully that's soon and then people will know it's coming and they can. Wait for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Case Capital Plan.
Oh, thanks. And I see the case executive director's top Don Sanchita. So we're just welcoming her. I don't know that she's planning on talking, so I won't put her on the spot, but we're glad to have her and. I am chair this. Oh, there's Sanchita's. We share space, you know, every time you walk through Ripley and it says case collateral, that's Sanchita's office and her staff. So. Sanchita, do you want to talk for a moment on what they're going to be voting on? Thanks for hopping on.
Sure, sure. Thank you for having me. First of all, thank you for Concord and Concord Carlisle's ongoing support to Case Collaborative. Case stands for Concord Area Special Education Collaborative for those of you who might not know that. So we are actually primarily providing two services for our member districts. One is special education programming and the second is special education transportation. And so every year we are required to, we are required to have an audit. And following an audit, we are told how much of our operating budget has gone beyond the approved budget. And so in FI 21, we actually, our operations ended in a surplus. And according to regulations. Six oh three CMR 50, there are three options that the board of directors are allowed to. Allowed to take with regards to the resolution of the surplus. One is establishment of a capital plan. The second is providing member districts with credits. And the last option is. Returning, returning the surplus to the member districts. And so this is actually a plan that we are seeking to establish. To fund expenditure that might arise from our buildings, from where we operate. We have special education programs that we offer our members. We have a, we have a location in Acton, which is approved by the Department of Education. And we run our, we run our school out of that location. And so this, this plan, the capital plan is meant to cover any expenditures that might come upon. That was purely capital related. And the documents that have been provided specifies exactly. The purpose that we are seeking to use the funds for, which would be a playground. Our students who come there are from our member towns. So we have students from Concord, we have students from Concord Carlisle. And this location does not really have a playground. And so in order to provide equal access to students who are coming to us. It is really important for us to advocate for them and to make sure that we have the resources available to, to, to. Make all kinds of amenities available to our students. And that's the reason why we are coming to you with this proposal. And if, if you approve it, then actually so far we have all of our member district school committees approving this. Plan. And so once we have Concord's approval, Concord and Concord Carlisle's approval. We will be able to go forward with establishing a playground. And then the second step would be a multipurpose room for our students. And again, the students who come to us are, have diverse needs, very intense needs. These are students that are not able to be supported in the, in the districts and the towns. And we do our best to make sure that we are providing them with the best, most appropriate special education programming. Sorry, I, 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 I hope I didn't go over my time.
No, 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 that was, that's very helpful. That's a great, great background.
She's covered all of it, I think.
It's my, it's my favorite topic. Sorry.
Okay. So Dr. Hunter.
Yeah, I'll just, can I just add, it's so, it's not, we normally might have a little bit of surplus, not unlike any of your budgets. COVID has altered that ridership was down, you know, et cetera, all these very. Odd anomalies. So it, it's a big surplus this year. That won't be the case going forward. So I just wanted to note that.
Now, if I'm, if I'm correct, our action tonight establishes the reserve fund. And henceforth, this would be at the case level for future decision making that automatically. Money's absent school committee notice would move into this account and be expended by the case board, not by. Member school committees. So it's a one-time authorization that has very lasting. Impact in terms of the fiscal autonomy that we're affording the case board of directors.
Yeah, I don't know that it's an automatic that the surplus would go into the capital. I think the board would decide. I think those options still to return some money to the districts would be there. Maybe a portion of it goes into capital. But without the capital account, you don't have that option. And just like you have a 5% cap on E and D, this collaboratives have a 25% cap on what they can maintain for reserves. So this would allow us more options simply when the surplus comes up.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, you're a liaison and Lori, you're a member, a voting member?
I'm not, I'm chairing this year too.
So it'd be contingent.
To case, though. I'm for Echo.
Oh, you're.
Go, forgive me. So, so how would a school committee or these school committees plural. Know about transfers of money in, in future years? Would they know before, during, or after the fact?
I think as your, your formal rep on the board, you should, we could have that conversation as to where and. How you'd want to be informed as to what's happening and where the options are.
So the one thing that I would like to, sorry if I may jump in. The one thing I would like to just state is that what, what we have proposed is pretty airtight. We are really not able to go beyond the proposal. And if we do need to amend this proposal, it will actually come to the school committees of all of the members.
Because I had understood that going forward, it was the same order of operation. I mean, right now there's the establishment of the, of the reserve account. But we also have to approve the proposal to put the money, like the designated money into that. Account. So I thought that also going forward, that was going to be.
I, I didn't read it that way. I read that in the future, they have a cap, what they can move in independently.
And that's accurate.
Okay.
So, but they do have a cap. That's, that's, that's the protection for the member communities. It is, the board can move its excess monies into this account and then expend them out of that account. Without future school committee attention, other than us being to some degree aware of it.
Exactly.
What, so you've got about a million and a half to move this year, Sanchita, if I'm correct?
So the surplus was for $1.5 million and out of that, the cap is for $500,000. That we are hoping to move to the capital reserve plan. The, the regulations are actually silent on the school committee voting when each transfer needs to happen. So the board can actually, the board of directors can actually decide the amount that they're going to. Move into the fund once it's established. But they of course can't go beyond the $500,000 mark. And therefore this year, the board could very well, when they meet next, could very well decide on a $300 cap or a $500 cap. And they, they then will need to decide what to do with the rest of the 1.5 million.
Last question for me. This has been very helpful. Could you suggest to us an approximate annual total budget or and/or a typical? Year-end surplus, if there is anything like typical?
Yes, certainly, certainly. The analysis that I've done of the trends that we've had, and I've been here in this role for four years. I can't really speak to beyond that, but what I can tell you is that typically we would have a surplus of about. First of all, our, our budget is around, it, it kind of centers around $15 million. And our surplus is, since at least I've been here, has kind of. Ranged in, within like, say. So we, because we have like two services, one is transportation and one is programming. We, we basically, when we started to have these surpluses, it was in the range of like $450,000. And actually, very interestingly, it was split very evenly between these two categories of services that we provide. And then unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know how you want to look at it, when COVID hit, it just, you know, went really sky high. We were very conscientious about our operations, very, very tight with our expenditures. And there were many, as Lori pointed out, there were many, many areas that we're not, we're not really expending. And therefore we had a really, really ballooning surplus of like $2.1 million. And in that, that was FY, FY 20. And then in FY 21. The surplus was really only on the transportation side and that was 1.5. And so the good news is that we are decreasing the surplus because we don't really want to have the surpluses. And I would say that projecting for next year. I, again, as I said, 200 to four, if at all we have any, would be, would be the amount. I mean, that I would, and, and again, just so you know. There, we do have a cushion in our transportation budget for gasoline line item. We really want to cover our bases with regards to the spikes of gasoline prices. And our, our ridership, just so you know, is about 12 million in one year. We are serving about, close to 500 students in, about going to more than 50 locations all over the state.
Do you have Sanchita 70 drivers right now?
We have 70 drivers right now. Exactly, exactly. So, so the gasoline line item is basically what makes it, like we, we want to like, make sure we, we have a little bit of cushioning in case there are spikes that are unforeseen. And, and so what ends up happening is if you don't end up using that, that ends up being the surplus.
Right. Thank you. Very helpful. You certainly came prepared.
You're her sixth or seventh school committee meeting. So I think she's pretty fine tuned. So we're going to vote in a little while. I think Sanchita could go if you don't have any other questions.
How soon will the playground be online if everything works out?
Yeah. So we are really fervently working behind the scenes. As you can imagine, with the supply being all delayed in every area, we are kind of. Really hoping that, you know, the supply chain is going to work out for us. And we are going to have a beautiful playground for our students by the end of this year. That's our goal, but it's a lot of, lot of action happening behind the scenes to make it all happen.
Are you comfortable that you consulted all the adaptive experts that you need to?
Yes, exactly. We have a lot of experts in our own organization and they have, they have all offered their. Help and expertise and they're very excited that this is a potential. Potential feature in our program.
Good, good, good luck with it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sanchita.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your support.
Okay. So we'll vote on that when we get to our action items and that will bring us to Jared. With the superintendents and Lori with the superintendent's recommended budget update.
So I am going to turn it over to Jared in a minute. What we're bringing you is a few ideas, just to make sure we all are on the same page. Both Concord and Carlisle finance committees have met. And either issued a guideline in Carlisle's case or. Put out a final guideline in Concord's case. So we've had a few days to look at the numbers and look at the delta. And we're just going to offer you a few ideas. This is the regional budget, obviously. So we're grateful Concord revised the guideline to add an additional almost $250,000, which I feel. Was somewhat in response to our, our helping to talk through the $300,000. Piece from the end of your decisions that were made. So. Jared, why don't I give it to you from there and you can outline, show the slide on some of the thoughts we had?
Got it.
You don't have a, just to, for. You don't have a, just to, for further context, there's no vote on tonight. So we're here just really bringing you preliminary. Feedback from our perspective on where we're at and to start a conversation with you expecting it will go into January.
Hey, can you all see that?
Can you link these slides so the public can see them if they want to in the future? And not have to watch.
Sure, yeah.
Go up with these slides together today. Um, so just, there's only really two, one slide for each district. It's just some, some numbers that you have all seen before. Starting with the superintendent's recommended budget, that's the 36,644,994. Um, the conquered assessment with this recommended budget at their previous guideline. Was 22,143,565, which was a million, 7,972 dollars over the guideline. Uh, they increased their guideline to 821,558. Uh, over the FY 23 assessment, FY 22 assessment. Therefore, the difference that we had to make up for Concord. Cause that is driving everything right now was 186,414. But to get there, we also have to factor in Carlisle. So to get to that number, we have to. Uh, come up with, uh, 240,813 dollars to be exact, to hit their guideline. So some things that we were throwing around this week and talking about, um, uh. One was even though we don't know these numbers yet, um, we felt that chapter 70, we could take a little bit of a gamble. And go from 675,000 and offsets at 725, which is an additional 50,000. Um, I'm sorry, those numbers are reversed. So this is actually after, after 71 transportation actually is 50,000. After 70, we felt that we could, um, we could potentially go up 3%, uh, which is an additional 87,000. Then the Mecco supplemental special ed grant, we can use that money, 40,000 and reduce salaries and move it over to that grant. And then we felt that we can maybe go up a little bit, uh, in our circuit breaker offset of approximately 63,813 dollars. Uh, and that would get us to zero. If this committee so chooses. Now, one of the things that we did do after we did our first round with all the administrators, department heads. Is we looked at all of our contract services, we looked at our supplies and materials, obviously our software. And at this time, um, we, we reduced that significantly from what they were requesting. So I. Uh, I talked to Dr. Hunter about that and, and didn't recommend that we, we start there. I think we start with the big, the big picture. Any questions?
So when looking for the 240, we're finding it by recalculating, uh, on the revenue side.
Yep, yep.
And we're flipping the numbers for chapter 70 and 71 from this slide.
Correct.
And could you say again for my benefit, uh, Metco, explain the?
Yeah, and, and Ian is on here too, but it's a, it's a, it's a grant that we got a little bit late, um, that we. Could use, uh, I believe we can use it in FY 22, Ian, but we could also carry that over for FY 23.
Yeah, I'll jump in Jared, cause this came to us from Metco headquarters on Friday. That the state legislator had, let us, I'm sorry, legislators have passed. Um, an allowance for the FY 22 Monday, money to be expended all the way into December 31st of 2023. 2022. So another half year, six months availability of this year's money can roll forward. So that's news we didn't have last week when we talked with the finance committees.
So, so Millie sent that out today as well. Um, I don't understand the reduced salaries. Maybe I missed that.
It's just that, so we have to get, so we would have to reduce salaries in the general fund, move it over to what I call the grant revolving.
Okay, so, so we're not reducing salaries, we're moving salaries.
Moving, so I think just to clarify, uh, this is actually, this is actually in addition to that, Lori. Um, this is a special education Metco grant.
Oh, great.
Um, so of, of 40,000. So we can also, as Dr. Hunter just said, we can. Um, we can use the FY 22 Metco grant into FY 23. Um, but this is, this is actually something different. Uh, this is a Metco special ed grant that we could reduce. Special ed salaries at the high school, say, uh, a tutor or a part of a special ed teacher. And charge it to this grant for FY 23, which would be a savings. It, it's basically bonus money that we're getting, uh, that we didn't know about.
With, with, with the, with the cliff caveat.
With the cliff caveat.
We often refer to and.
Yes.
Uh, each time we refer to it, we increase the odds that's going to catch up with us painfully. I think we've got to be aware of that.
Correct.
Because we've, we've referenced that a few times in, in a few short weeks. So the, the extended runway on fiscal 22 Metco, uh, has yet to, uh, benefit us. Uh, and we haven't quantified how much might be available before a run over to fiscal 23 yet.
No, and we probably won't know that until the spring. That's when we'll start understanding exactly where we are. And probably start strategizing like we do for that next fiscal year, when it comes to reserves and potential prepayments. Uh, my goal would be to try and carry over as much of that Mecco grant into FY 23 as possible. But at this time, it's too early to tell how much that would be.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So things are changing, obviously, constantly right now and, and the revenue numbers are. Are, you know, taking a little risk that once the cherry sheets come out and the governor's budget will, will have some increases.
And the governor's budget comes out just after, we need to.
Yes.
Like one day later or something?
Yeah. It's, is it, it's, it's the fourth Wednesday. So I think it's, it's, um, we're just gonna miss it.
Yeah.
And I'm not hearing really anything yet. I'm hearing that, uh, you know, obviously about the rainy day fund and, and things like that. That's why I felt comfortable recommending this sort of increase. Um. You know, usually I'm, I'm very conservative with my chapter 70 and chapter 71 increase because we have to be. Because we vote the budget before the governor's budget comes out, but, um. This is also when we have good reserves. This is a gamble that I think I'd be recommending to take. Just because if we don't hit the revenue mark, then E and D, uh, helps with the loss of revenue.
Um, before you release these slides, uh, to us, fussy request, would you be kind enough to date stamp these budget ducks? Because we already have dozens of them for fiscal 23 across two districts and. Uh, speaking for myself, uh, it's, it's a, it's a organizational, uh, chore. To, to track them. So dates would help a great deal. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Cause, cause we know you're working on it constantly and keeping us current.
You got it.
Okay, so are there any other questions? No. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, we will be visiting this conversation again. And our budget hearing will be on January 11th. Right? Yes. Okay. Um, all right. So school committee goals update. Just wanted to check in and see how we were doing and is there, just to help with our planning for the coming year. Um, just to, you know, it's good. Should I, I can bring these up. Can I share?
Should be able to.
There we go. That should work. Right. Okay. So we have, um. All we have COVID that we, we have been checking in on it, right? Um, we have not, well, we've looked at the challenge success, um. Have not done too much of a technology review, um, and, and we have our looking forward of the key takeaways eventually. But I think we're still in the thick of it. So I don't know what we have to, to take away. The budget, I think we are very well on track on all of our budget stuff. Um, on our policy. Our superintendent evaluation, uh, is coming up, is going to start kicking off. And Dr. Hunter, you're going to send out, um. Appointment times.
Yeah, Erin, Erin will do that, uh, early January.
Okay.
Now with, with that, should we get clear again on what the formative and summative will look like? Uh, now, so we have that framing. We have Lori making it easy for us in the best sense. By the nature of her reports, which, you know, aligns so nicely with, with her goals. But is it premature or timely to now look at, uh, whether we're going to go with DESI format? Or modified DESI format or Concord Carlisle format? Last year was a hybrid, was it not?
Yeah, and I thought.
I thought it was just DESI format. Right? I thought it was straight up, cause I wrote.
Okay, alright.
I mean, now you're making me question it.
I thought we had added some extra places to put some, um.
Of our own goals?
Narrative where, where Desi left off without some narrative, didn't we?
Oh, in that, perhaps that top section? I don't know, Sarah. You know what, Court? Why don't I look at it and I'll see what the, the DESI format is and I'll contrast it, what we, with. What we did last year and.
But, but I think it, I, this very conversation does, I think, lend credence to the idea that we all ought to take a look.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Um.
And Alexa, you and I are on that together, correct? So I can, I can work with you on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that we can, um, yeah, we can pull that down and maybe even Tracy, we can have, um. Schedule a quick call with Dorothy Presser and have her go through it with us. She was really amenable to talking to us last year anyway.
Well, and I did just through my training and I believe that everyone is using the DESI evaluation. Um, some districts though actually don't give any narrative at all and it's just numbers, just FYI, so.
Yeah, and, um. Yeah, so we can have, we can have a conversation about that.
It seemed to be a bunch of talkers, so I don't know how we do.
No, I love the narrative. I love the narrative, but I think that there is.
I care, was, I can't remember if it was in Concord or Carlisle. We were like, we want to do away with the numbers. We just want to have the narrative.
You have to. Anyway, all right, we'll, we will look into that, Court.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, uh, community engagement, um, we have been doing the coffees. I think that, um, Tracy, are you good with scheduling a few coffees in the?
Yes.
Well, they might be virtual now.
Probably gonna be virtual. As much as I love an in-person coffee, um, we definitely have to get to Carlisle. I have been to, uh, let's see, I've been to a CMS meeting. I was supposed to get invited to an Alcop meeting. So I could see if we could start going to the PGG meetings if anyone would like to do that, just to, you know, be one of their guests. I think that the PGGs love having us there sometimes, just, you know, to feel supported.
Okay.
But I can, I can reach out to all the PGGs and see if they want us to come.
Good. Yeah, I would echo what you said. I think they are grateful to have an occasional opportunity to exchange with us, us with them.
Is there a president's meeting? Was there already one in December?
We did not meet in December, but we are meeting in January.
So maybe, um, whoever goes in January, do you want to just bring that up and maybe do it in that format where everyone's in the room there? Would that be helpful? Or do you want me to reach out separately?
We meet on the 5th.
So we can do it then.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, if there is, if there's a way to have in-person anything, um, in Carlisle, I know that would be. Especially after all of the new, this new parent orientation kinds of that, January, early February. Chock full of, uh, you have a bunch of information for parents. So it's nice to have a place to. Have parents kind of, um, synthesize all of that. Okay. We'll see where we are, um, at that point. Um. Let's see, I guess he, I think we've been doing a good job with that, cultural competency. Continue growth in the workshop. I mean, I think, I think we're, we're good. Or, or. Staying on top of that one. Well. Um, contract negotiations. We need to start. In, but that's not till February-ish. Right?
Yeah, that would probably be a good timeline.
Okay.
It's just the two small unions.
Yeah, yeah. And our special education goals. Um. We have not. Talked a lot about, um. Fed director search or anything, um. For framing a. The job responsibilities.
Are we all set with our interim through the remainder of, uh, this school year, Lori?
The, uh, post enclose today, so we have documentation to submit to DESI.
Okay. Is it hopefully just pro forma?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've got, that gives us a lot, you know, some time to. Quick question for Lori. Um, I believe from, at, at the last CPAC, and I hope I'm not mixing Carlisle with the. As I, as I'm sitting on both, uh, both the committees. Uh, I believe that the special ed director was going to come back and do some presentation, right, to CPAC and to, to us. Is that, would that be in February or January?
I think that's for you to all talk about. Debbie was here not that long ago with you in person, remember at Ripley? Um, and then she presented at CPAC the other night. So I think she's happy to come back. When you tell us the time is right and help us know what the topics are that you're most interested in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, school committee efficiency and culture. I think this one we, um, need to be aware of. With an onboarding, upcoming onboarding. To happen, um, just to be aware of how we can best bring a new member into, uh, into. Because there's a lot of ground to, to make up, um, so I think we can think about. What, what we need to do to prepare whoever that might be, um, to be effective for the remaining part of the year. Um.
In, in the past, Sarah, the chairs have been the de facto mentors for new members. I'm imagining it'd be. Somewhat similar.
Yeah. And middle school building project. Um, you guys have had a busy, busy couple of months on that one. So I don't think there's anything else to do. Is there any, anything that either on this list or off the list? That anyone thinks we need to have particular focus on, um, in the coming months?
Um, just speaking as the newest member, I think that the onboarding process, especially coming in like mid-year. Is going to be critical to help a new member kind of acclimate to the committee.
Mm-hmm. No.
And, and I would also say if. You know, whoever the new member is goes to the training sooner than later. I mean, for me, it was just. It was timing, um, but I actually think that my training was great and it was in person. I think it's very different than the Zoom training was. The Zoom training was half the time. So. You know, I think we should look at that a little bit carefully.
When Tracy and I compared my charting the course experience with hers. Mine was virtual. Um, hers seemed to be way more robust, so much so that I. Might endeavor to go back.
And they do have these great slides that I can share with anyone if you didn't get them at your training, um. They just really goes through the whole training in case you'd like to do it yourself or get it home. But it's definitely worthwhile and there were definitely members that were there, um. That had gone numerous times to charting the course and I think that now. With COVID, that's really been a game changer. It's, I think, a very different course than it was. Probably six months ago, you know, a year ago, two years ago.
I should know the answer to this and I confess. I don't recall. This off-cycle election with a new member coming in, when is this person to be seated?
Town meetings in May, would it?
Yeah, I don't know. Is it a town meeting cycle? Because it's an off-cycle election, I don't know.
Well. With my, my election, which was off-cycle. I was, I had to wait. To have a vote, I, I was not a voting member until town election and there were some. Nuanced legal reasons for that. Um, if I'm remembering.
I think this member would be seated im- immediately.
That's what I, I'd be happy to confirm that with Kari.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
Because it's not our regular election.
Right.
You were still in a regular election.
You're right, I was. That's weird. Even though the seat wasn't up, it did coincide, you're right, with a regular election.
So the, the speed with which this happens really uh reinforces Tracy's point that we've, we've got to be ready to. Provide the kind of support necessary.
Yep, absolutely. While still doing our day jobs. Yep. All right.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, back to my agenda.
Capital project.
Capital project.
So I'll open this up and then turn it over to Jared and Russ. We've. They have been following up on the need to. Really fine tune the paving project and better under paving, lighting sidewalks, et cetera, at the high school and. Best understand the cost. They've been working very closely with the town of Concord and we're grateful for their engagement and support. Yet again, they. Pretty much made us their priority upon request, so. Jared, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm going to start with that title that they deserve, um, Ellen Kath Cart and Steve uh Dukren. Um, basically turned around the numbers that um the former DPW. Manager had worked on with us from two thousand and nineteen and, and they turned them over and I'd say less than a week, um. And uh it was amazing. Uh, Russ really uh took on this project and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him. Add more to this, but what they basically did is they, they updated our two options. Um, option one was utilization of the asphalt berm. Uh, and then the other one was utilization of the slow uh granite curb. Um, and in the school committee packet, you can see all those numbers that they updated. Um, and sort of what they mean and then Russ uh wrote a memo to Lori and I. Um, with his recommendation, um, so why don't I turn that over to you a little bit, Russ, if you want to sort of go through that? Um, and then we can answer any questions that you all have and um.
No, but, I mean, basically you covered it, you know, we reached out to the engineering department, um. They tur- uh turned it around very quickly. They updated the twenty nineteen cost estimate. I believe it was a. Fourteen percent increase, um. Then they came up with those two options for the berm or the granite curb option. They said this can go out to bid with, with their work in February if it gets voted in. Um, they can complete this project uh within our timeline, either option over the summer. And um. I was just, could also recommend that we go with the granite curb. Currently, we have the asphalt berm up there. And if you drive out there a lot, you can see the damage on the existing. Curbin, so. That's. Any questions or?
And just to clarify too, the number that we used, if you remember in the, in the capital plan. We used, to be safe at the time, we used Gil's numbers from two thousand and nineteen. Then we were able to obviously go back to these numbers and that's why you're seeing a significant decrease, but at the time, we didn't know that was necessarily. An option to reuse the town, um, so that's why again, you're seeing uh. Such a difference from what we projected before.
Great.
I've got a question, if I may, uh, Russ, can you help me understand catch basin? We've got a huge retaining area there now. Why so much attention if?
I, I believe it's the uh, the Walden street entrance. They, they're going to plan on doing some upgrades there. To all the catch basins and some of them have. Drop down and. So. I don't know how long they've been there, but they, they need some attention.
All right. And the wheelchair ramp, is this something new because? Uh, we've got the concrete, the granite curbs where at the present time, the condition is such that. There's sort of a de facto ramp anyway, is that?
Yeah, I, I think. Sometimes, you know, with the ADA regulations, if you're doing upgrades, you know, those. Have to be added. I, I'm not sure where it is now, but. If any type of work like this, you have to have the wheelchair ramps.
No, I, I know we have to meet code. I'm just curious if this, if this increases our. Accessibility or simply improves it?
I would say improved.
Improves, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Well, our, our thanks to uh the team over at DPW. Working with you on this.
Yeah, it's a very thorough, as you can see, estimate. They, they did a really good job back in twenty nineteen and.
So I just recently drove this and I see a mixture of granite and berm.
Yep. Most of the granite, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, most of the uh, the asphalt berm is over on the Walden Street side, on the field side. That's where most of the damage is too.
Right, but can we reuse some of the granite?
Possibility.
Because it's. And one side is berman, like where the.
The football field side is correct, some granite.
Right, and then, yeah. So they could just look at that and see or.
Yeah, they probably would reuse it, they'd just reset it.
I mean, I know the whole parking lot is berman. I'm sure there's a lot of damage with the plows with that, so I, I get, I get the difference. It's just. Do see the granite and somebody will take it.
Right, right.
Um, good. But we're not voting on this tonight, but.
Russ, tell us about the lighting, what uh, what can we envision?
I, I have it on the draw-ins. I mean, it's. You know, it's going to be all new light fixtures and all new underground conduit, mm.
Is it going to feed sidewalks or sidewalks and parking lot?
Um, I believe just the roadway in which it's on the right-hand side of the, it would be the roadway and the sidewalk.
Okay, so if I was uh coming up from uh Thoreau Street, I'd have lighting. Uh, past the field. Into uh the parking area into the school. Okay, and then out to Walden as well?
Not past the parking area. You would have the lighting on the draw-ins I saw, Court, it would go up the Rose Street. And then turn right on to the uh, the road in front of the BD Center and then going down on the Walden Street.
Okay, so it's going to follow the loop, basically.
Yeah.
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 Okay, I've got you. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Russ. Thank you for getting this.
My pleasure.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Hope to see it. Hopefully it goes through, so. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we can move to action items. Um, so we have to go through the three votes for case. So we have a vote to. Approve the establishment. We, we have a motion to. A vote on the approval of the establishment of a capital reserve account.
No, we need to approve the capital plan first, I guess.
That was the request. It, it's the formal vote on the, that way you're feeding what's going to happen with the surplus in the reserve account, so. It doesn't have motion language there, but I think it's, it's helpful if you do vote the plan itself.
So we want to, wait. We want to vote the approval, the proposal? We want to see, is that?
So if you approve the capital plan for twenty twenty-two. That will reinforce what you're going to do and then coming votes after that.
Sorry, I, yeah, I jumped forward on quick. Okay, yep.
Uh, so this motion would reflect the slides entitled Case Collaborative Capital Plan twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Yep.
Calling for playground. And uh for multipurpose run re-outfitting. Cynthia, can we consider that a motion on your part? Was it? Be happy to second it.
And we'll do roll call. Is everybody clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is for both, correct?
Just for the region.
Region, thank you, sorry.
That's good to clarify.
Okay, Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Mostafi, I.
Wilson, I. Okay. So now we have, is there a motion to? Uh, vote to approve the establishment of a capital reserve account?
I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee uh approve the establishment of the capital reserve account for the case collaborative. Uh, reflecting the information presented in the. Memo dated December three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Sarah, can I just? I'm just reading their memo.
Yeah.
They have a recommended motion?
You, yeah, you want to add the, approve the establishment in conformance with provisions of six oh three CMR fifty point.
Oh, forgive me.
Zero seven.
I withdraw my motion.
Do you want me to make a new one?
Sure. Go for it.
Yeah, okay, I just because it's up. Um, I move that we approve the establishment of a capital reserve fund in conformance with the provisions of six oh three CMR fifty point seven ten.
I'll second that.
Do we have a question or we go right to?
I, I have discussion. Uh, does the Massachusetts regulations call for a? Half million dollar max balance or is that a local recommendation?
I would have to double check, but I believe that's the max.
Okay, were it not, I'd say we'd reference this memo, but if it's embedded in the regs, no need. And I think we all have the understanding that. We're looking at a five hundred thousand dollar balance max.
Yeah, so you could reference the memo since it's so clearly there, then be sure you're. Referencing an accurate document.
I'll leave that to the mover of the motion.
I'm just trying to look.
Draw the motion? Anyone?
No, I'm just looking at the regulation. And that specifically doesn't have any.
No, I think you have to just set the cap now that I'm getting a minute to think about it. That's what you're doing.
I'd be grateful if uh we could amend this motion.
Sure, let me just.
To, to reflect exactly what Alexis said, but add to it uh consistent with the uh, the. Proposal outlined in the December third, twenty twenty-one k- memo from Case Collaborative.
Okay. I'm just in looking. Alexa, do you set, accept?
Oh, do I second it? I'm sorry, I didn't know if I was even allowed to. I'll second that.
No, you have just accepted.
Accept it.
Oh, I accept it. How about that?
Or do we need to vote on the amendment? I don't have my Roberts rules, PNB.
Yes, we do.
Yes, you do.
So I can second the amendment, I'll second.
I accepted it. Okay, so now we'll vote on it?
And now we can vote.
I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I.
So now to be. Yeah, okay, so on the. Whole package, I will vote I. I, Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I.
Okay. You know.
Let's see here.
Now, we can vote to approve the proposal for. The surplus for this year.
I have it in front of me. Do you want me to do it? Yeah. Um, I move to approve the December third, two thousand twenty-one Case Collaborative Capital Plan.
Uh, before you second it. Um, the. The document is titled something different.
Yep.
So let's clean it up, but before we have a second, let's clean it up and add that it references. The. December third document entitled Fiscal Twenty-One Cumulative Surplus Resolution Proposal.
So why don't I just withdraw it? And put in a new one. Right? Which would be, I move to approve the December third, twenty twenty-one Case Collaborative. Capital Plan as outlined. In. The memo entitled Case Collaborative FY twenty-one Cumulative Surplus Resolution Proposal.
Second.
Question. Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Mostafi, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I.
Okay.
Uh, Lori, please express our thanks to Sancheeta again for showing up tonight. That was helpful.
Certainly will. Thank you.
Right, vote to approve CCHS exchange student.
So I can talk on this just very briefly. I think you have the critical information in the motion. Uh, we've been approached by one of the placement agencies to host a student from Italy for the. Uh, spring semester of this coming spring, so we're hoping you'll approve that. We're excited to have them. COVID protocols thoroughly in place, obviously, um, as are all the other requirements for registration.
Okay. There, a motion.
You ready? I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve one HS USA Global Cultural Exchange. Exchange student from Italy for the twenty twenty-two spring semester at CCHS.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Mostafi, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I. Thank you. And then now we have the vote to approve a scoreboard at CCHS tennis courts. And I see that we have Bill and Robin here with us to speak a little bit. Hi, welcome.
Okay, so, uh, Aaron was supposed to be here tonight, but he got caught up at the basketball game, so he asked us to jump in and give you a brief overview. So the last meeting you all, uh, approved the, the shed in the benches, which is great, they're already started to go in, and you asked us to come back and give you a little bit more information about the scoreboard. So we had raised the, um, in the pickleball tournament last year, we raised about $41,000. And we've spent, uh, we have about 25,000 left. The scoreboard to get it purchased and installed is about 32,000. So we've worked with the scoreboard company. They're going to carry a, uh, line of credit with us. And they're gonna take the 25 grand and get the project started. And we're gonna have another, uh, pickleball tournament in the spring. And we feel confident that we can, you know, raise the $7,000 we're short, considering we raised 40 last year. So we just need to get the approval from you folks to get started, and they'll, they'll get the scoreboard ordered and ready to go.
So the estimated, it'll be up and running?
We, it.
I think.
We're hoping, we're hoping April, May, but that might be, you know, um, it's gonna depend on actually the steel to get into the ground. And that's, that's the biggest hurdle right now with the materials and everything being backlog. So he wasn't gonna give us a hard estimate until we actually sent him the money.
And Aaron's overseeing the coordination with facilities and all that for this.
Yeah, he's, he's run everything and he's gotten everyone's buy-in between maintenance and, uh, Spence, and he's gone through everything, so. To be all set.
Okay.
Can you clarify the numbers for us a little bit, Bill? I'm looking at the proposal for 16K for the unit itself. And then we've got, uh, conduits and install.
Yeah, so, so the, the scoreboard itself is about 15 to 16. Now, this is a, about a month or so ago, so you're looking about that. And then to get it installed is another 15 to 16, depending on materials.
Got you.
And the gentleman that, that actually installs it came out, did an inspection, so they know exactly what they're doing, where it's going. So it's a, it's a good number. It's just a matter of the materials.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the school committee members, thank you so much, Bill and Robin.
No problem. Thank you.
It's exciting what you've done.
Yeah.
We're, we, we just want one more state championship and then we'll be satisfied.
Yeah, it's exciting.
He loves the pickleball tournament, so this is, uh.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're starting to get ready already, believe it or not.
So is there a motion to approve? The scoreboard?
Now, this is coming out of a, uh, authorization out of a dedicated gift account. Is, am I on the right track here?
Jared. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Clarify, I know, um, in the past when we were raising all the money, um, I, the money that we raised went into the Concord College School District account, thanks to Ian. Um, we were able to facilitate donations because it was COVID and we needed a place to be able to receive the money, and obviously Bill and I did not want to collect it on our own, so we needed a, an account. Um, so Ian was nice enough to facilitate, um, collecting the money for us. What has since happened is we obviously planned to cut that check for the 25,000 that remains directly to the company that's going to be putting up the, the scoreboard. Um, and for the balance that we're gonna be raising, there is a nonprofit um, that Steve Sores has opened up, um, as an umbrella that will enable us to put money under the nonprofit that will basically be open to help clubs and other CCHS, uh, teams to basically have one umbrella instead of having to apply as a nonprofit individually, which is genius on his part. Um, and we can put the money under there. And then obviously, uh, Aaron would be the person who would authorize the next check to be cut, uh, to finish off the project. Just so you know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what entity is that? Who's setting up the umbrella nonprofit?
Uh, there's another parent, actually. His name is, uh, Steve Sores. And I have to pull up the exact name, which I can do, but.
With baseball, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. He's through the baseball program, but he had this great idea because, you know, it, it's a lot of money to obviously apply for nonprofit status. Um, and if you're just a little club team or a varsity team, or even, um, you know, the CCHS theater program, um, you know, everyone needs their own nonprofit status. And this way, people can kind of flow under this. If they're interested, they can speak with Steve, but he's been very receptive to allowing the tennis team to do this because he knows we're in the middle of this project. So. And his son plays on the team. That helps.
So I, I guess I still need clarity from Jared as to, uh, the authorization is for the install or the expenditure of district funds, uh, that came to the district as a management agent, so to speak, for the fundraising. Can, can I get more daylight on that?
Yeah, I mean, Laurie, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I mean, the reality here is that we had to house a donation somewhere in the Concord College.
Court's question is, from a procedural standpoint, are we approving the use of, of money that is already in the district, or are we approving the facility modification?
I would say, why don't you approve both?
Or do both, yeah.
Why don't you do both, and then you're completely covered?
So the motion would be along the lines of authorizing the school district, uh, to uh, accept the scoreboard and the related install and receive and expend, uh, uh, over a period of time, uh, something in the neighborhood of $27,000 for same. Does that kind of capture where we're at?
Yeah, but I think the money's already in how, like, they're not, there's, I don't think there's any more money going to the district for this, because last time we approved
Right.
the designation of that account.
Okay.
Right, sort of posthumously, but, um, so I think we just need to approve the expenditure of the money that's in that account right now for this purpose.
And the balance that Bill's.
That will be supplemented by whatever comes from this other, um, catchall.
So as a technicality, Bill, you're, you're responsible for the balance to be raised, uh, and it wouldn't necessarily go through the district and back out again.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just seeking clarity, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
The minute we touch something, it becomes public and all the, all the governance issues in, related to that. So thank you for bearing with us.
Okay. So do we motion to expend current monies, um, and accept donation for any uh, supplementally needed funds for the purposes of this installation of a scoreboard at the tennis courts? Fair enough?
Good enough for me. I'll second.
Well, I think we're also approving the install now.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So with that caveat, uh, uh, if that was a motion, I'd be happy to second it, Sarah.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call.
Oh, yeah, discussion. Thank you. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, I'm an Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Stuffy, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I. All right, so. Look forward to seeing this, uh, and
Exciting.
to, to, you know.
And the state championship. I heard Bill announce it.
Yeah.
Oh, we have, we have, uh, two in a row in the boys' last two years, so we're shooting for one more.
There you go.
Exciting. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, with that, uh, additional public comment, uh, we'll open up the floor again for any members of the public who may want to make a comment. And if you wish to do so, please either turn on your video, use the participants', uh, raise hand tab, or in the, whatever, whatever feature on Zoom you have for raising a hand, please utilize it. And I am not seeing any hands raised. So I will accept a motion to adjourn the Concord College School Committee while the Concord School Committee remains in session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Marano, I.
Most stuffy, I.
Randy, I.
Wilson, I. Good night. Happy holidays.
Good night.
You and the new year.
You and the new year.
Does anybody need a break? Yeah, okay. We'll move forward. Our first item is the superintendent's recommended budget.
So I will turn this over to Jared as well. Um, again, just context from where we are. Uh, the finance committee did review their preliminary guideline. Uh, in the discussion they had last week, they decided to not um, increase that preliminary guideline. So we still are at a delta. Jared will have the exact number. It's between about, just under 500,000 or so. Um, so we want to show you some thoughts. This, this budget is harder. Um, I'll let him go through the things he's proposing to consider, and they're not going to get us to the guideline, and then we can talk more on what comes next.
Great. So, um, as Dr. Hunter just said, um, the first lineup here is the super tense recommended budget. Um, this is the fi, uh, the finance committee's guideline, which is 1,127,898 dollars over FY22. Therefore, we have a Delta of 486, 848. Some of the things that we discussed, again, we went through all of our supplies and materials, contract services, et cetera, and already reduced those, so that was not a recommendation at this time. Um, so we went to, uh, the Mecca Supplemental Special Ed Grant, uh, getting that element CPS. We can reduce special ed salaries by that, again, move those over to the grant, which, as Mr. Booth said earlier, could eventually create a, uh, a cliff. Um, and then the other, uh, would be, uh, to actually increase our circuit breaker offset of 75,000. So we identified about $165,000 to, um, come closer to the Delta. Therefore, we are still, uh, 321,848 dollars away from the Concord guideline for CPS.
Uh, we've been working on some background numbers, some of which we were asked if we could provide at the finance committee meeting. You know, we, Jared did some high level looks at, uh, contractual increases. And at CPS, it's 1.9 million, Jared?
Yes, let me get that.
About 1.9 million, I think. Um, you'll see that's a pretty substantial difference from where the guideline increases. So we've closed some of that differential with the way we built budgets and the savings we had within that, and then a little bit of what we're proposing tonight. Um, I spent a good little bit today trying to see what else there was. Um, you're pretty quickly into staff and programs because there's not much discretionary options at the CPA, in the CPS budget. We don't have the revenue piece that's on the town side. Um, so I think this is where we are comfortable going to, um, or at least starting to talk about.
Is the 1-9, uh, uh, the contract numbers and longevity and not, not step increases?
No, so, so it's about, so it's just about under 2 million for total increase in all staff. Then we had some additional FTEs that were already in place now due to kiddos staying in district. So of that, about one point, just under one, just over 1.3 million is due to COLA longevity increases, um, and step increases. So the total contracted, contracted obligation, uh, is just under 4%. Which is a number that is typical, um, in any year, you're gonna have between a, I always said, uh, you know, a 4 and a 5% increase due to some of the retirements, people increasing to top step, et cetera. You're always looking at about, 4, 4% is really a, is a number that I see every year, almost.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So where we stand right now then is, uh, a little, little headroom on discretionary, uh, and, uh, then, then it's program.
I mean, we will keep, keep looking there, you know, and looking back at how, what we built, and that's the positives of the zero-based, um. We'll keep looking, but this is where we are today. We're also running uh, special education. I heard that question clearly last week, so Debbie's been running some, um, you know, if, when kids stay in and the cost to run a program, and when kids go out and the cost to do that, and there's no question, we're saving um, substantially with the in-house program. So we'll have that. I'll send that to you too, hopefully before the break. She's been fine tuning that. Um, so.
And I'm being quiet for a couple of reasons. I want to go back and listen to deliberation again, because I'm kind of not understanding this gap, this why the region got so much and Concord Public Schools got so little in their guideline. So I am kind of puzzled.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that because that's my question as well. I didn't, I didn't hear a uh, a, a single rationale for this that I could, uh.
Coming out of the finance committee, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And I think what they did at the high school is just they accounted for the the decrease in assessments in FY21. So I think they essentially made us whole that way uh, at the region. So it's really not a so that's, I think that's what they did.
Yeah.
They gave us the additional money that was lost due to the root, um, increase to E and D at the end of last year.
But it, it, that's why I have to go listen to it again, because my feeling is there was some confusion in their discussion. Um, and they were sometimes conflating one district with another. And as much as you say, this is typical, we did have a huge bump with the Concord teachers. Um, and that's baked in, and that's not something we can change. So I don't think they have a firm enough understanding of how little we can do with this budget versus the high school. Um, so that's my concern is that w, w, this puts us in a really tough spot, and I don't want to keep having this misunderstanding with the finance committee regarding the Concord Public School budget, because this isn't gonna really change, so we're gonna constantly be at this. Um, so I think we need, that, that's why I hope we can maybe go back to the FinCom um, and have them better understand. And I hope that adjustment, I'm hoping they might make an adjustment um, with a real understanding, because I think if we just sort of stop here, that's not the right answer. So I'm not, I just have to go back and listen to this again, and, um, you know, we can talk more on it in my, for me, at the next meeting, so.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. We felt like our job was to give you some response to last week's finance committee meeting, but I, I'm glad you're suggesting all those things. I didn't stay on to listen to their deliberation, so I don't have that answer other than the memo we got, so.
There, there was definitely some confusion, which isn't, that's understandable, but I, I was just sort of like, I didn't realize it was this, you know. But I, I was just sort of like, I didn't realize it was this, you know, just we, we don't have that much wiggle room with the Concord Public Schools. So, you know, anyway.
And can I just ask a question? Who typically will go back to FinCom with this information? I mean, how does this now, how does this now work from there?
So we would need to discuss it as a full committee. I, I don't think it's appropriate for an individual, even a chair, to go back and have such an important discussion without committee having a lot more input. So I would encourage everybody.
Both committees would.
Well, right. But, you know, yes. But right now we have the big gap with Concord Public Schools. So I would encourage everybody to listen to, it just, the meeting just went up yesterday afternoon to the FinCom Guidelines Meeting. And I wouldn't, I think you could just listen to the deliberation itself, which is.
And I think we can take advantage of their requests for additional information and additional clarity. Some of them are, are having, understandably, having a, a tough time understanding where CPS stops and region starts and how things are or aren't movable across those lines. So that is a big opening for us to continue our dialogue with them.
Yep. That's what we do. Good. Well, thank you for the response. Next up is CMS building project update.
Anyone? Court, you want, you want to start?
Well, in, in short, the current schematic design phase is complete. The number is in of 102,816,000, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori and Alexa, is going to show up on the warrant. Is that right? 102816?
Uh, I thought, that's going to be the number at town meeting. Yes.
Right. The warrant is already printed.
Yeah, that was the 103. I don't think we can retch, can we change it actively?
Oh, we can move anything we want on.
Right, but we'll move the 1028.
There you go. Okay, so we'll move it. Yeah. So we are, to a certain degree, what, standing down for a couple of weeks right now.
I wish. Not when you're on the communications committee, Court.
Not when you're on the communications. The, the one place that I think, as a member of the, of the two committees, I'm going to strive for more clarity sooner is on our capacity to generate solar on the property, because to my way of thinking, we have a, an interesting situation. The town manager wanted to move this over to the light plant. Light plant has accommodated them to say yes, but the, the details aren't forthcoming yet. And at some point, the solar generation won't be a, an item that falls under the building committee, because it's supposed, the, the actual install, whatever it is, is going to follow the construction of the building and the acceptance of it as a functioning school, where we'll be running all electric with no onsite capacity. But we will have the necessary infrastructure for some capacity. And I'm not quite sure where the school committee weighs in, where the building committee weighs in, because the building committee considers this an independent light pack plant project, where the light plant weighs in, where the select board weighs in, as to how much solar generation these different entities might, might want or need. School committee might look at this from a number of perspectives. But we wouldn't necessarily be as hard-nosed about the, the return on investment calculations that the light plant might have. I think a reasonable question for anybody voting for 102 million is, are you 5% shy or 10% shy of your total costs? The budget seems to be pretty elastic right now for solar, anywhere between 5 and 10 million dollars. So even though we can't answer any of these questions definitively, I hope by town meeting, we can at least explain when and how these questions will be addressed. And what the role of the school committee will be weighing in on whether we want canopies or not, where we want canopies, or do we want rooftop only? The light plant's going to have to weigh in. Is there ROI such that they want to generate more than 100% of what the school needs to feed into the Concord grid? We don't know these yet. And again, I'm not asking anybody to be in haste, but I'm saying the questions are pretty clear, and the answers are going to require some attention fairly soon, I think, even if they're speculative.
Yep. Well said. I think the school committee has an important role here. You know, we are, it is a school, under the school committee, and we very much want to partner with the light plant and the light board to move this forward, to have some solar capacity at the new middle school. So.
We have a, the town, I don't, I, through the building committee's budget, the 1.5, did bring in solar design associate out of Acton, who did put together a, I guess you'd already call it a proposal or a, or a preliminary design. And it gives the town a lot of opportunities to build out to something far above what the school itself needs, if the town wanted to use public property for additional solar generation. So it'd be interesting to know how the light plant wants to manage this and how much they would want to see onsite to make this real attractive to the light board and the ratepayers. So that's, that's the little I can offer up. Alexa, can you give us a timetable forward for what the committee's doing and how we're providing citizens with the necessary information?
Sure. Um, we, we admittedly too are taking a brief pause for the next, you know, 10 days or so. But we're going to resume our outreach as soon as the new year commences. We have a, a couple of things actually already scheduled. We've, as part of our outreach, we've always engaged with small groups. We've found that there's great engagement when we come to someone's meeting, rather than have them come out to us, whether it's on Zoom or at a, you know, place in town. So we'll continue to do that. We have a few things scheduled. I think we'll also potentially have a couple of larger opportunities for engagement, especially as we get closer to the vote. And again, the week of January 4th, we will resume our weekly outreach. That goes to essentially two lists. The first list is people who have opted in to hear, hear updates from the building committee, and then we also send it to sort of the heads of different community groups in town. So we'll continue to use our social media accounts and, and, you know, just en- engage as best we can. And we're aiming to, I think Lori was in our last sort of discussion, I think we're aiming to have two engagements a week, which would essentially be a total of six more engagements prior to June. Not June, geez. January 20th, which is special town meeting. And the vote, of course, which is the third, I think will be more reminder kind of emails just to come and in fact, go to the ballot. So we'll continue to utilize our lists and social media for that. And, and, and really, that's it. I, I do think it's worth noting that, um, the hearing, I thought, went really well. Dawn, Lori, and Pat were exceptional in capturing the work the building committee's done and, and the importance of getting this building built to continue our educational vision. And I also think it's worth noting, I think it is public information, that the finance committee convened after the hearing and voted, what I understand, to be unanimously to support the article. So I felt that that was a real testament to the hard work of this committee, and I can say that so nicely, because I really haven't been a part of it for so long. So it's not self-congl- congratulatory. It really is the work of all, of all of you that have been on it certainly much longer than me. I think people who have been paying attention are really grateful for that work, for the transparency, and for just the thoughtfulness of everyone who has been on that committee. And I, I think it's important to make, to make sure people know that. We got a little applause from Terry on note on our Zoom. So.
There is, there is one other item, much smaller in scale perhaps than solar, that will occasionally come back up to the building committee or, and/or the school committee. And that is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and its proximity to the, to the school. If memory serves me correctly, we were interested as building committee until the architect declared that it was cost prohibitive within the scope of our project. And I think that was the primary driver for us effectively dropping further, further analysis. But we're going to continue to hear about it, because that's a access point that's being used right now by students and a few teachers. But it does not only bring up cost implications for a building committee or a school committee, should it be addressed ever. But it also brings up security issues anytime we open up another access point to a middle school, a physical access point. So that is, I just want to tell us that's unfinished business in the minds of some. And don't be surprised if we have to engage around it again. When and where and how, I don't know, but be surprised if it didn't come up.
Yep.
I know we've met a couple of times. I haven't personally been there, but I know some of the chairs and design team have been with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee a couple of times. It is the slope of the landscape there that's prohibitive, because we'd have to get all the way to ADA compliant. And that's a major, major project. So the access is still there. I just want to make sure everybody remembers that. The access is still there with the current slope that it is and.
Yeah, but still, it, it's not defined at all. So people kind of take the path that they want. And so that's mostly over that field, which is less than desirable. So, you know, so it's, it's sort of like something that we should, I think, what Court is saying, keep in our radar. The cutting through, the use of it unadvertised is just going to increase. I mean, social media, people post, go to this parking lot. It's a good place to jump on the rail trail. So, you know, we just have to be, I think, aware that it's, it's, you know, it's our neighbor. It's, it's a great way for kids to get to school if they live in a neighborhood that is easy to access from the rail trail. So.
And we're increasing our population on the property.
Yeah, exactly. There's that.
So more to come. We should anticipate it, even though we don't need to deal with it today.
Yeah. Good. All right. Next up, is there anything else on the building?
Not for me.
I would just second Alexa's comments at the hearing. I do think the chairs and Lori did a fantastic job. And watching from home, it was very impressive. And there was just, you know, I, I think there would have been applause if there could have been. So thank you to the building committee and to Lori. And, you know, it's just been a ton of work over the past, you know, two plus years, and it still continues. And I think we need to recognize that the committee has worked so hard, and they're going to continue to work on the building committee. So thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Um, okay, as the special town meeting warrant article, I just wanted us to vote on this tonight. So if anybody has any issues or concerns about voting for the warrant article and our action items, this is the time to discuss it. We'll use the 102816 million number, which the finance committee and the select board have used in their supports of the warrant article.
All right, it's reassuring that we have an extra bidding contingency in there that we didn't have six weeks ago.
Yep.
So, one, it protects us should we need an extra 2.5%. Two, it's money the town won't spend, i.e. you won't spend if it's, if it proves unnecessary. But, but a pretty wise bit of extra headroom, I think.
Yes, absolutely. We're in uncertain times, to say the least. So next up is the vote to approve the special town meeting warrant article. So I'm racking my head, Court, help me. What is, what is the typical language the committees use? We vote to?
The school committee votes affirmative action.
Thank you.
On the warrant article for the new Concord Middle School in the amount of 102,816,000 dollars.
Second?
Very good. And roll call, please, unless there's more discussion.
Think we've, I think everything's been discussed, ever be discussed in the history of things that needed to be discussed. So I am thrilled to vote aye.
Who's I?
Marana, why?
And Randy, I. It passes unanimously, and I so declare. Uh, the next is to vote to approve the CPS capital plan. So I have a little bit of a problem, because the, the plan that was posted is incorrect.
Yeah, we just caught that. I think Jared, the thorough needed to get.
Yep. Yeah, and Aaron's working on just switching it out.
Okay. Uh, the other issue is, I still don't feel like we have gotten to the right conversation about what to do about Ripley and the region or Carlisle. I don't know how you want to refer to it.
You mean how to allocate Ripley costs?
Oh, yeah.
You've got a, you've got a confusing thing, because the sum is a clean 6040, but this may not be so for certain capital items under that roof. Is that what you're saying, Cynthia?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like this is a pretty big number for the paving.
And it all lives in Concord, not CC.
Correct.
Is, is the point, even though there's a, even though there's a CCC need and benefit.
Right. And we just.
On the face of it, that's, that's accurate.
Right. We just split that bus sweeper 5050.
Well, Cynthia, do we have to, we have time to approve this July, sorry, January 11th, do we not?
Well, we just had to be clear, because we would need to add an item to the.
Yes.
The Carl, our, our, our budget, I mean, our capital plan for the region.
Well, we can't, we can't even say yes or no to that idea without our Carlisle members among us too.
Exactly. Yeah. It's, it's sort of chicken and egg.
So unless somebody's got a better idea, we want to do this once, and we want to do it properly and have it put to bed. I'm of a mind, one, we get the, get the change in there that, that Aaron's working on. And two, that we have you and Lori and Sarah figure out how to frame that conversation at the committee level.
Yep.
I do think you're actually asking the town of Carlisle, not the Carlisle Public Schools. So.
We would have a warrant article for the region for the split.
Oh, okay. That's a, that's a different discussion. Yeah.
Yes.
It's, because. I don't know. I, we're going to have to talk in between meetings, I think, in January, because I don't, Jared, could we do that?
No.
Yeah, it's not a regional building.
It's not a regional. It's, it, there's nothing in the regional agreement that says that Carlisle would have to pay for this, but it would be more of a conversation between the two town managers. But then you get to factor in, how much is the Carlisle share? It's really, it's not a 6040, because it's 6040 of the region.
No.
It, it's more like a. It, it's more like a ten percent of the total district, but then you have the areas that aren't being used by Carlisle, such as Case Collaborative, the preschool. So that's all going to be taken into consideration. So you know, when we were just, you know, doing back of the envelope math, it might be like a five percent charge to Carlisle, if that, if there's a mechanism to do that. Again, back of the envelope.
Can I just ask, um, has this come up before with prior school committees or?
It's come up, it's come up for decades.
Yes.
For decades and, and no one's ever really gone through the process of doing this, correct?
Because everybody, we keep saying it's not that much money. Like with the bus depot. Concord takes up most.
Carla, yeah, that, I think the depot's different. Ripley's your one shared building different, outside of the high school. So it's, it's an anomaly to some extent.
Right. It's come up around the depot, I should say, which I agree is different.
Yeah, because Concord owns the depot. It's a Concord building completely.
Right.
And that Carlisle was clear they weren't going to pay capital costs there.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I don't.
That's not the case here. Ripley's sort of a functional piece we've just got to figure out.
I don't think I'd be speaking out of turn, Tracy, to say that Chris Whalen considered this uh, some unfinished business on his part, you know, that he wanted to see addressed. Um, it was.
There haven't been, I don't know, I mean, not recently, given the list is big because there haven't been major renovations at Ripley in a long time. So I think that's the other reason it's feeling fresh.
Well, it's not impossible to address this at a uh, district to district, municipal to municipal level.
Yeah.
At least have the conversation. Um.
Well, I don't know. I'll offer to start that conversation with Carrie Lefler and Tim Goddard and see where we go between now and.
I would appreciate that.
January.
Just so that we do our due diligence, you know, we're not on.
Yeah, this is not, this is nothing new either. It may be new to them, but it's not new to the two-town dynamic.
No.
And, and I think done right, it can really protect a very healthy two-town dynamic that we've enjoyed for a long, long time now.
All right. I'll get an email out to them.
That would be great, Lori. I appreciate that.
And could you keep uh Sarah and Cynthia in that loop?
Certainly.
Thank you. That'd be great.
So what would the committee like to do? We can vote this tonight and then we can amend it at a future meeting. Change it. Believe it as it is.
Well, if, if the document we have isn't what we need and there's no uh, cost to waiting until Jan eleventh, can we do that? And then we just vote the memo?
I think that's fine. I mean, I don't believe that causes anybody any distress, right?
I mean, it's the simplest way to go.
Mm hmm.
Cleanest, yeah. Everyone's in agreement that there's no cost to waiting?
Yeah. Is there any issue?
Lori or Jared, is there an issue if we wait till January eleventh?
No, not at all.
Let's do that.
I do believe it is. So you know, I do believe Owen just posted it.
Right. You know, for the public and the committee, we didn't have the right information. So. Right. So we'll just have it ready to go for the next, for January eleventh. One item checked done. All right. I believe we've reached the end of our agenda. And it's a little after eight thirty, but oh, well. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Anderson, aye.
Who's aye?
Marano aye.
Thank you guys all so much.
This is our last roll call for twenty twenty one.
No, no, thank you. I hope everybody gets a restful, restful week next week.
Safe and restful. Stay safe, everyone.
Stay safe, yes.
Yeah.
Avoid email.
Yeah, avoid email, avoid all of it.
Enjoy your families. Absolutely. Have fun.
Great. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So much.
All right.
Night all. Thank you.
Good night.